We have a special guest here tonight, including our Mr. Wade Sullins' family and Trace Estes, our new representative, Judge Riedes. We appreciate you coming tonight. And we have a special guest. Our scouting group is here tonight. And after the invocation, they're gonna do a flag ceremony for us. And we'll be calling you guys forward in just a moment. Let's have a little indication of who it's talking about. Father God, we thank you for this day of life. Lord, we thank you that we can meet and conduct city business tonight. Thank you, Lord, for opportunities to serve. Lord, we ask that you be with our community in this Christmas season. Make it special for the people of our city. We ask that you would continue to bless us with good help and guidance. Christ has been given. Okay, guys, we'll let you guys take over and we'll remain standing for the flag ceremony.
Attention, forward march. Salute on number one. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we would like to have the inauguration of our new councilman. We'd ask Judge Riedes and Mr. Wade Sullins to come forward, please, and any woman that can, please, to this place. First of all, let me tell you, I consider it an honor that you asked me to do this for you tonight, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, then we begin. Judge Riedes, I state your name.
Wade Sullins.
Solidly swear.
Solidly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Then I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
As long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully and humbly discharge the duties.
Of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon the office which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sir, you are formed. Congratulations. We ask you to come up and join us at the council table, please. We'll be getting started with our official meeting in just a moment. I wanted to take just a second and give a couple of thank yous for people who helped us with our annual tree lighting ceremony for our city. These people include quite a long list, and I just don't want to not thank the all the folks appropriately. It was so chaotic the other night with everybody having so much fun. I wasn't able to properly thank these folks. But Terrapleys Christmas Tree Farm, that would be Larry and Jennifer Nix donated our tree. Santa was Almond Gann for this event. Walmart gave us a gift card, enough to buy the lights to light the tree. The Boy Scouts of America not only did our prayer to open the ceremonies, but they helped us with the cleanup afterwards. We thank you guys for that. That meant a lot to us. The Hamilton Chamber of Commerce, Lacey Williams and John Boyd, furnished Santa hats, candy canes, and photography. The Band Boosters, Suzie Sims and Stacy Samerson did refreshments and furnished a sound system for us. The Hamilton High Band had an ensemble led by Zach Corpus, and they did a fine job. Hamilton Elementary School Chorus, under Jennifer Settore, they played a magnificent job. Hamilton Middle School Chorus, Ron DeBois, they had several performances. Hamilton High School Key Dancers, led by Susan Brown and Esther Baller. The Elite Dance Twirl, also led by Susan and Esther. The Hamilton High Color Guard, led by Gina Holloway. Hamilton Majorettes, led by Lynette Walker. Extreme Twirlers, led by Heather Davis. The Co School of Arts, Alyssa Beasley was the director. The Street Department, Mike Johnson and his group did a lot of work with the trash receptacles, barricades, and other incidentals that we needed. The Rep Department helped us set up the tree and get the lights working. The Hamilton Police Department, Forty-Nine News, Wayne Mays, and the Journal Record, and Scott was here for that. And WMTY. That's a long list of folks, but I didn't want to leave these folks out. And also, tonight was our annual Christmas parade. It's just wonderful. We had a fantastic crowd on the streets tonight. Weather was perfect for it. It would give you that feeling, that chill feeling that you need for Christmas. But there's some other events coming up. Friday, December the 7th, the Hamilton High School Band's Christmas Concert is at the New Gym at 7:00. Friday, December the 7th, Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer will be performed at the Round at 7:00. And Saturday, December the 8th at 2:00 p.m. Thursday, December the 13th, the Hamilton Elementary School will perform its second annual celebration of Christmas, and it's featuring a Charlie Brown Christmas at 6:30. And Friday, December the 14th at 6:30. And Sunday, December the 16th at 2:30 p.m. at the Bevel Center. So don't forget all those upcoming events for the Christmas season. Okay. Again, thanks for coming out to be with us tonight. I believe some of the scouts might be sitting in on a governmental action tonight to earn some badges, maybe. We're proud of that. And I'm glad y'all chose us. You could have chosen any branch of our local government, county, or city, and you chose us, so thank you for coming. The first item of business tonight that would be on the current agenda would be to approve the minutes of the last meeting held on November the 19th, 2018. We need a motion to approve our minutes. Herbert made the motion. Bobby Joe made the second. Bobby Joe, second. All in favor of approving our minutes? Thank you. Also, we need to approve our accounts payable bills for the month of November 2018. We need a motion for that. Herbert made the motion. We need a second. Bobby made the second to pay our bills. All in favor of paying our bills? Okay. None were opposed. Okay, we have a guest from NACOG tonight, Mr. Heath King. He's with the Northwest Alabama Council Local Governments. And he will be making a presentation tonight concerning our CDVG grant for water sur- roadway improvements for the Raggedale Housing Complex. So Heath, if you would, we'll let you come forward at this time and address the council, please.
Thank you all for, of course, for having me tonight. We, good news, we've known for a little while now, but official news, you know, the city was awarded $450,000 CDVG grant. I never said as many times I've said that, so I've slowed down honestly, because it's hard to do. Out at Raggedale Housing Complex, it's gonna be used to replace basically all the infrastructure out there, the street, new drainage, new water mains, service lines, sewer mains, service lines, et cetera. So basically, the city received a letter of conditional commitment, is what it's called, from ADECA. Late November, something like that, or in November. Basically, the conditional commitment means you've got the grant, the money's yours. There's just a few steps that you have to go through, some of the red tape in getting a grant. And so I'm working on that red tape right now. We have 75 days to have that turned back into the state, and I feel like we'll pick that timeline easily, probably till January the 12th is the due date. Once that's received, the state will turn around and actually send you a signed by Governor Ivey grant agreement written in blood, and we can get started in earnest. So like I said, I'm working on those requirements now. I spoke with the engineer today. They're starting to survey already, so we're gonna try to move it along as quickly as possible. But I think tonight, Angela, we have to have a resolution passed to approve NACOG to be the one to administer the grant. So just real briefly, not toward the death with it, but we handle all of the go-between between the state, the one that's giving the grant, and the city. So all the environmental stuff, and financials, and equal opportunity, and on and on and on. So that's what this is for. I believe we passed a resolution made approving what the total project is gonna be, how much the grant will cover, the city's portion, which was $202,000, and then the housing authorities putting in $311,000 of their own money. So, you know, altogether, the grant is actually the smaller of the two. So I think that was one of the things, honestly, that really made it a great grant, is because they're skin and game, and that makes a big difference. Instead of just, you know, a handout without anything put out there. So I feel like it'll be a great, great help for Raggedale. So I'm just here tonight if I do have a... Just gonna hand this around. It's just in kind of a general timeline. And please excuse, I was sitting there looking at it just a second ago, and I realized down on number three there, I know all of us want to get a year older really quick, but these are not January 2020 dates. It should say 19. So I kind of covered number one there at the top. So we expect to be basically letting bids around March, April. Start construction around May, good drive time of year, and, you know, get that work done. And I believe factored in about five to six months for construction, because it's a pretty intensive project. Almost a million dollars, I'll tell them.
Any questions? Or any comments from the council? The person who will do the actual work, will it be one general contractor, or will it be multiple contractors on this?
Should be one general contractor. That's the point.
And you guys will do all the logistics as far as the oversight of the job and this kind of thing?
Yes, sir. Basically, anything that the engineer or the contractor's not doing related to the grant, we're doing all the paperwork. For instance, when the contractor sends a pay request and they want their check, they send that to me, and I check it to make sure everything looks right. Pass it on to the change letter and to get signatures, send it down to ADECA, and they give me their invoice, so.
When I went down to Montgomery and received this billboard-looking check, it seemed real simple and easy. But the following week and a half, I got so much paperwork that went with it, I almost fainted. I said, what shall I do with this? And then I called Keith, I called Keith Jones, and he said, send it to us. That's what we do. So I sent it on to Heath, and Heath began to get things lined up to show that we're financially capable of doing this project. And just receiving that billboard check was the easy part. We're in the meat of it now, and we're gonna need their help. And that's what we'll be trying to do. The next step of our agenda tonight is to approve, recommend to approve a resolution to work with NACOG on this job. It would be Resolution 2018-12-3, authorizing NACOG, that's Northwest Alabama Council of Local Governments, to administer the scope of services required to secure funds for the CDVG grant for the improvement of Raggedale Housing Complex. These fees for this service will not exceed $50,000. Some of the fees may be shared with the Hamilton Housing Authority. Mr. King should be able to answer questions concerning those matters.
And if I can jump in, the RFA will not, of course, be on the city alone. Basically, whatever the total cost was, divided out what the housing authority's portion is, which was the sewer and drainage, and then the city, you know, owns and maintains the water and the street, excuse me. So whatever that percentage ended up being, that's what the city will pay. I think it's about 45% of the total project cost. So, long story short, that amount will be kind of split almost evenly between the city and the housing authority.
So we have, somebody has to be responsible for it. This resolution we'll pass tonight makes someone responsible. We're the entity that's getting the project, so we, in fact, the housing authority can't make this commitment. It's standing good for the project, but they will be shared. The total fees won't exceed 50, and there'll be shared fees between us based on our input into the project.
This could be less than this, right?
Yes, sir. It's, that's, of course, the engineer's best estimate, you know, at the time it was done. Of course, there are some things, which would be like our price for administering project. Of course, you know, this all started back early, you know, probably March, the process of writing the application, left it in the car. But it's, you know, it's no small thing. So I would commend Mayor Rodney and every, Betty Carter, you guys for everything that you've done, because it really does make a big difference for the state. It has one A and one B. Which one should we pick? And you can show that the community's behind it.
But we have one or two public hearings on this particular one, and we had a good turnout, lots of letters.
The best turnout I've ever had at any public hearing I've dealt with on a drain. And I think you spoke highly that you were there, and it was not all flattering. You've got residents out there that are, you know, people complaining. That's what we like to do. So, you know, but that was the point, was to get the feedback. And really, until that day, we didn't realize what a drainage issue they did have. And it was some of the residents, you know, a lot of those walkers and wheelchairs that had to cross the street to get to their mailbox, get to anything, really. You know, unless the street flooded to the point that they're just...
Some of the folks cited the fact that the street floods over there because of the poor drainage that was apparently, when the add-on happened, the drainage problem has been there for quite some time. It will be straightened out in this process.
The older part of the street was concrete, and it still looks like today, probably, that it was, you know, it's probably what, 40, 50, 60 years old, and it's still perfect. But the asphalt has been worn out, so.
I would like to make a recommendation that we adopt this resolution tonight to go forward with this project. I think it's a very worthy project, and anytime we embark on grant projects, we have to have a certain amount of administration and problem solvers along the way. Of course, it started with NACOG. They were the one who wrote the application for the grant, and they've got a lot of work in it already. They haven't charged anything at this point for it.
You guys pay us dues, be members, and we feel like we give a return on our investment, so.
Whatever we call them, they respond, and we can depend on NACOG for their help anytime we ask for it. So I'd like to recommend that we bring this to a vote and adopt this resolution. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Bobby Joe made the motion. We need a second. Tony, second. All in favor? Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Is there any other matters that need to come up for the council tonight? We'd like to say that we welcome Mr. Wade Sullins to our council. We're looking forward to working him real hard, and we'll enable a lot of you, Wade, to help us go down the road together. I know we can count on him. Got anything you'd like to share with us from the state level? Our new representative, Mr. Trace Estes is here.
Always glad just to kind of update everybody. We have organized our orientation meetings next week in Montgomery for a few days. They'll kind of get us out there and kind of get closer to committee assignments and things of that nature. This is our second trip to Hamilton. The mayor, I tell you, we've spent a lot of time at the senior center in Hamilton here the last couple of months. We've had issues with our senior meals and delivery, with food wasn't temping out, and the portions weren't a nice size. And I'll give Keith a lot of credit. His folks really tried really hard to work on that and help us, and I'm always grateful. And you call Keith, Keith's gonna help. But it just got to the point, he'll tell you one day. I have to always remember when I call Keith, he's such a busy man. There might be other people in the car with him. I caught him irritated one day. I said, I want the telephone number. Somebody in Montgomery answers. Nobody but the governor. You've tried, I've tried, we're not getting anywhere. And one of those mayors came up to me later and said, I was in the car with Keith that day, and I could tell he was pretty stimulated. And so, but I was back here again today, and I'm confident that we've pretty much got that issue solved. The mayor and I, he knows we've been in contact on another issue we've been working on, the two of us. We've been on the phone almost every day the last few weeks and trying to work on something for this community that's critical to all of us. And so we're grateful. I appreciate the mayor's help. Anytime I call it, the mayor, if I call at 10:30 at night, he answers the phone. And I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful that we're partnering together to serve our town. And just will say this, had a great event here Thursday night. We were here for the tree lighting, and I put something on Facebook later. It was like a Norman Rockwell moment. This beautiful facility sitting here, and the kids singing, and the music playing, and it just, it was great. And then all of a sudden, they turn on the snow machines the last few minutes. It was a wonderful event. We've got a lot to be proud of, and I appreciate everybody's work on that. The mayor and I had a chance at the last minute, a week ago today, to go see the president in Tupelo. And we walked in. I felt honored to be with the mayor. And we got there, and we ran into Gail Spann from Winfield. We had been trying to help get her a little bit closer to the state. She already had tickets, but in light of what her family had lost for our country when her boy was killed in Afghanistan. So we ran, Bob and I got there. We had VIP passes. It was gonna get us in a little bit better location. Running into Gail, really helped, because they let us stay with her. And next thing we know, they took us in and literally sat us down right behind the president. And the mayor and I looked at each other like, are we gonna get to see you? And the bad part was, the mayor was smarter than me. The paperwork I got from White House that morning implied that it was gonna be indoors. This is how I dressed, minus a T-shirt that I'm now wearing. It was 35 degrees, wind blowing. We got there and sat down at about 12:45. I ran into Senator Cindy Hyde Smith, for whom the president was coming to speak that day, had her picture made real quick. And I asked her, I said, Ms. Smith, I said, what time is the president coming? It's 12:45. His cousin's all get out. She goes, about 5:00. I looked at the mayor, and what was even worse, right, we got there, but the Secret Service stopped us. And Bob and I were standing there side by side, and he goes, hey, you need to ditch the tie. And I thought he was being silly. I said, well, I wish I could. Probably don't need to be that casual with the president, because I'm not kidding, ditch the tie. So I took my tie off, just took it in my pocket, and I thought, does he think I've got a wire or something around me? And then he goes, and unbutton your collar. And he said, and you too. And he pointed to mayor. And we realized he really missed it when this guy come and sat down next to the mayor and I later, about an hour later, kind of a gruffy old fellow, and he sat down and left a couple seats between he and I. Well, another secret or Secret Service agent come up later and told him, he said, you need to move down next to this gentleman, meaning me. He goes, oh, I'm okay where I'm at. And he said, why don't you move down? He said, I've got this young couple sitting there. And he said, well, they can sit right there. There's two seats. And the Secret Service guy looked at that guy, he said, sir, you can move, but we'll have you removed. And I looked at the mayor, I said, I'm not saying a word all day. But we had a great trip. The mayor and I got, it was a really good day. The mayor and I had a great time, gave us a chance to get to know each other even better. I've always considered Bob a good friend, and he's an honorable man. And I'm grateful to have him directing our town. He does a marvelous job for us. And he gave us a chance to talk over some projects along the way, going and coming. But the most profound thing, I think the mayor said all day, we finally got to dinner that night, and he looked at me, he goes, Phil, that? And I said, what? He goes, Heath. It's been extremely cold. But I appreciate you going with me, mayor. We had a good day. And all we can tell you, we're working, I promised you, if you'd give me a chance, we're not here to serve one town. We are trying to serve every town in this district, and that's what we've been doing since we knew we had no opponent in November. We've been doing this since July. doing this since July. And so we're out every day, and I'm using Hamilton a half dozen times a week, if not more. And so I love this town. I appreciate you letting me serve you, and we're gonna continue to do that.
Let's forward the work, sure. Any other comments tonight, or adjourn? If not, we will need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make the motion. Need a second.
I'll say it.
Herbert made a second. All in favor? Thank you. We do appreciate our guests tonight. We hope to return again. Thank you.